Is someone coming, Laurie?
No.
Okay. All right, well, welcome everyone to our workshop. Today is Thursday, May 23rd, 2013, and I will officially call the meeting to order. Laurie, are there any additions or corrections, modifications, or substitutions today?
There are none.
Okay. Moving on, today is, well, Mike Chatterton will present the annual Blaine County School District Budget Workshop. It's informational only. And just as a reminder, these workshops are interactive, so, you know, they're not, I would, it's not a time for comment, but a time for questions and clarification. So, for anyone in the audience, if you have a question, please raise your hand and recognize the chair, and I'll make sure you get that opportunity to ask. Same with the board, if you could please just recognize the chair, and we'll try to keep order and let Mike, we've only got an hour and a half, so we want to give Mike the opportunity to work through this. So, and Mike can, Mike, you can take questions too, if I'm not paying attention.
Sure.
Do it that way also. So, time then, Mike, I'm gonna leave it up to you, and we're all ears.
Okay. It's gonna be the same type of a format that we've done with the last several years. It'll just be, I've got some things in here that I want, that I've highlighted, that I want to bring your attention to. We'll talk about new positions, we'll talk about the impact of the negotiation, you'll be able to see some of those aspects throughout. This is typically a workshop that we do late afternoons, and usually runs about two and a half, three hours. We may go through this a little quick, and if we do, we can schedule another time if we need to, but there's not a lot of differences in this budget that is going to be out of the organization. There's not, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of questions, and not a lot of categories you're jumping. I'll point at this amount of increases in Woodside, who definitely not to tell you it's mine.
Right, okay.
Okay. On the second page, we're just, here's our enrollment projections that we have for next year. It's very stable from where it is this year. We don't anticipate much of an increase in enrollment for the next, even the next few years. Okay, the next chart, it just shows enrollment histories and actual enrollments for the last several years, as well, and as well as the next couple of years, on purpose too.
Mike, does this projection include the changes at Woodside with going to a magnet school, or as it currently stands?
As it currently stands. It does not take into account dual conversion program. But we're not anticipating losing a lot of students because of the magnet school, nobody should do that in other schools, but, for example, the capacity numbers on the very right-hand side, it doesn't have to include any of those numbers.
Okay, I was just curious with, because I noticed that Bellevue and some of the other, Haley were close to capacity.
Yeah, and they have been over the last several years, they've been pretty close to the capacity numbers anyway.
Okay. Ma'am, you have a question?
Is there any way to make those numbers a little larger and clearer? They're small and fuzzy.
We'll ask our technical person. Is that a possibility either?
See. Jessica?
So, I'm just curious, Mike, like how, because I was looking at last year's budget, or not budget, but the enrollment numbers, kind of how you figure those out, you know, from the, you know, projected, because I see last year's projected for 2013-14 was 918, now we're at 805. But I'm just kind of curious how you're doing that, or whoever the team or whatnot is making those.
It's based on the numbers that we've projected for the last 10 years, and it's all based on a 30-year average.
Right. Because it seemed, I mean, because they changed from last year's projected enrollment to this year's projected enrollment, or almost 100 students.
Because enrollment, enrollment changed as well from last year from what it was projected. So when you update those numbers, it's gonna change all of the rest of the numbers as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I think we've had a discussion about this before, but that straight line method going back 30 years is highly erroneous, and we've talked about that, and I'm wondering at what point you want to change it to something that's regression, or something that's more professional.
Probably at the point, at some point in time when we feel like we need to have those numbers accurate. Right now, if it's, if it's stable, and we're not looking at any type of a new school, then...
But I would think if that's what you're basing the budget on, you'd want to have the numbers, you know, that's funny, Woodside.
But if I'm not projecting any type of a enrollment increase, it really wouldn't have an effect on, on budget.
Yeah, but Catherine just asked about what you're, what method you're using, right? And so, I think we're using a method that might be erroneous, and I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, you know, at what point we might make that a little bit more professional. Ethan? Can you have a second? How that would change this, changes this.
These are also just enrollment numbers by building, and just the charts to show that. Those are actual enrollments that I've projected. And then, this is a budget, projections of our total budget as well as the general fund over the past five years, plus the next year. You know, and what I will point out here is, if you look at the general fund, back in 2008, '09, the general fund budget was 57.7 million. Today, it's 55.6 million. Some of that money is, is carryover money that we had in budget before that, but, you know, if you look at the expenditure side of our budget, it hasn't had much of an increase at all in the last five years.
Steve?
Catherine?
Can we go back to that slide for just a second? So, can you explain the all other funds?
All other funds are the federal, everything, all of our funds except the general fund is all other funds, which would be include school lunch, federal programs, environmental education, federal forest funds, the bond fund, the school plant fund, it's everything else other than the general fund. These numbers are a little misleading, because if you look on all other funds category, about 23, almost $24 million, a large portion of that money is, is what is considered unappropriated balances, so it's money that's in there for the budget, but it's not intended to ever get spent. It's money that's set aside in case we need to build that elementary school at some point in the future. So, I mean, there's a, there's a large portion of that, which is about $12 million this year that is set aside in the budget that's gonna be pushed out for in the future.
So, so what's the, like, is it because of the, the bonds and the levy, the fluctuation, let's say, between, like, '08, '09, and '10, '11? You know, there's a kind of a big fluctuation there too? Is that because of the bond money coming in, or like...
There's a lot of reasons for it. It could have been most likely in the year of 2010, '11, the 37.1.
Yeah.
That was with all of the building projects going on at that point in time, all of the HVAC improvements that we had going on during that fiscal year, as well as principal payments that we were making on, on COPs for when we built the high school, a lot of that stuff was in there as well. I mean, it was like $4 million a year, paying going out to there, so. I mean, if you watch these from now on, those numbers are gonna steadily increase on all of the funds, as that investment money sits out there and earns interest on it, it will just gradually increase over time until we actually build the elementary school or give the money back to the taxpayers, whatever we decide to use.
Okay.
So, all of our funds includes all of the levy money which has currently been borrowed?
No, it doesn't.
So where is that levy money at?
The levy money is in there, but the levy money doesn't have anything to do with the borrowed money. The borrowed money is a balance sheet entry, this is only expenditure side, so it doesn't have anything to do with borrowed money.
Okay.
Okay, now we're gonna get into the general fund a little bit here. Okay, and if you look at this, this, you can see the actual budget in there, and this is the same type of presentation as it was before, but a couple of the key things I want to point out here is, in the fiscal year 2009 and '10, our local property tax levies was 30 billion, 32.2 million dollars, and this year, or even next year's budget amount is still the same amount, 32.2 million dollars. So our property tax levies have not increased, or they've increased by $9,000 over the past five years, fiscal years. Same type of a thing, if you look at the state revenues, our state revenues that we had budgeted in 2009, '10 was 15.45 million. This year, it's 14.5 million, so you can see that same period of time, we've lost about $900,000 in state revenue. So that's, that's the reason why the budget is staying constant the way it is, because our, basically, our revenue sources are frozen, unless the state decides to add additional money throughout the years, but, you know, it gives you a pretty good snapshot of what's happened with, fed with state dollars over the course of the last five fiscal years. It's steadily decreasing. And if you look at what's gonna happen this year, you know, actually, we're gonna receive less money in state funding than we did last year, even though the state is coming forward and saying, we're giving all the districts a one and a half percent increase in funding. The reason for that is, all of the pay for performance money that was in last year's budget went away as well. So we're not receiving that money, but we are getting a little bit more on the formula. Okay? Okay, here's also a summary of the general fund, and it's broke out by the different programs, and it's also categorized over the past five years as well. So you can see a prior history of what's happened with the elementary program, and over the course of that time, as well as the secondary program, and all the programs within the general fund. If you look at the difference between our budgeted expenditures between fiscal year 2012 and '13, and 2013 and '14, it's about a half a percent increase next year as it was this year.
Steve?
Catherine?
So from the, from last year's, last budget, and we had talked about this earlier, about getting some actuals too, but on the whole, was there leftover money from that final 55, 356?
We won't, I won't be able to answer that until after the fiscal years, which will be probably end of July, middle of August, before we have those numbers, but there will be done. We have 2.6 million dollars in contingency funds that we don't anticipate will be spent. There'll also be that 282,000 in unappropriated balances at the bottom of that that won't be spent, and most likely, there's gonna be additional money throughout the course of this that will be spent as well.
And, and what's the, I forgot, I'm sure I've asked this before, but what's the transfers? So there's that 2.6 of contingency, the 282, and what's the one right above that? The transfers, the 1.28?
Transfers is money that gets transferred out of the general fund into another fund to make up a short one, is the easiest way to, to explain that. And we'll get into that when we get into the other funds, but, for example, the environmental education fund. We charge $25 a student to participate in that program, we raise about $5,500, and it costs us $30,000 to run it, so the $25,000 comes in as a transfer from the general fund into the environmental education fund to make it a whole.
Okay, and that's the sixth grade?
Yes.
Trip?
As well as, like, the plant facilities cost purchase fund. State statute said it has to be paid for out of its own funding source, out of its own separate fund, so the money that gets transferred from the general fund into the cost purchase fund, the money that's...
Okay.
I'm just wondering if you might be able to go back to the previous slide for a second? I just have one question. So on that 32.2 million, that's a really interesting number, because, because it's a fixed number, actually, as a percentage of our assessed value, we've, it's, as a percentage of our assessed value, the amount the school district is taking has gone up Because our assessed values are down by 40 or 50 percent, and we're still collecting the same amount, that's very different than other municipal organizations in this value who have, have less money coming in as our assessed values go down, and that's usually where it works, but the school district has benefited tremendously by having that budget stabilization, because you're still getting that full amount, even though our assessed values are going down by a lot.
Our assessed values are not 50 percent over.
Okay, we need 40.
They're not 40 either. If you go back and look right now, we're on a recovery. I hear what you're saying, but right now, if you're gonna talk about it, then you have to be honest about it, and I think our values right now are each in 30 and 40, not 40 and 50.
Okay, 30 and 40.
So, I understand what you're saying, but that was a big long report of values that were dropped or going up, and that's what the school district was collecting prior to that to run the district.
Oh, no, I understand that. As a matter of fact, we were the ones that went and get down and nailed that for, for the district. What I'm trying to say is, even though it's flat, it's actually gone up as a percentage of our assessed values by a substantial amount, and that's different from any other municipality. For example, the ambulance, the fire, all those things now get less.
I don't think, I don't think I would agree with that as well. I don't think, any of our taxes have gone up substantially.
I'm not saying that on an absolute basis, I'm saying on a percentage basis of our assessed values, yes, that's true, they have gone up substantially. It's an inverse relationship.
So, just as a reminder, at the beginning of the meeting, and I think you weren't here yet, Liz, I just want to make sure that everyone, that we, when we have, at this setting, that there's, there are questions and not comments, that, and that's just so we can move forward. We've got a lot of information to come.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you explain how that local property tax figure is obtained, and, I know, I know that's a pretty much fixed amount, and that was voted in a long ago, so it doesn't have to go before the voters, if you could. But how is that set, and why hasn't it gone down with reduced property taxes that have been coming in the past?
Because all of the school district levies are set on a dollar amount and not a levy rate, so regardless of what happens to your property values in the county, we levy on dollar amounts, not rates. So those levy amounts stay constant. Okay? Now, here's the elementary school program, or here's, here's the revenue sources. So this is what, if you look at this, this is what the projected revenue was last year versus what it is for the upcoming year. And only, only increases that we're showing here are the taxes tuition, it's the fourth line down, as well as the third line down, and the taxes tuition. Those are both allowed to increase by state statute, 3 percent. So those are the only levies that we have in the district that, that have the statute ability to increase by 3 percent, everything I've found is fixed. We have the local supplemental tax levy that was passed back in the mid, I think it was about the mid 1990s, '93, '94, and it was a permanent levy, $2.6 million, it's been on the books for the entire time. We also have the budget stabilization levy of the 2019, $5 million, it was passed in 2006, and we had the special session. Yeah, John?
Mike, on the, on the taxes and tuition, are those for the students that we pay to educate in Minidoka down in Yale, and the ones north of the SNRA?
Yes. Okay. State step, state sources on the bottom, base support, which is through the funding formula, you can see right there that there's a small increase for this year, that's the one and a half percent that the, that the state is seeing. We get the small increase in the transportation support on the bottom. There's this increase as well as the benefit apportionment, and the benefit apportionment, the state reimburses us for the Percy retirement system that we pay for those staff members that are on the index, as well as social security, so we'll have a slight index or increase there. In the other state support, you can see where the pay for performance comes out of the budget, last year versus this year. So the net effect is a slight reduction in state funding for next year, in projection. Okay, here's the, here's the elementary program, and this is kind of a, it's gonna be a historical projection of what's going on within the elementary program, on both categories of what's going on in those fiscal years, why is those, why is those budgets increasing or decreasing? So I'm leaving on those histories for the fiscal year 2011, '12, that's what happened, any kind of positions have been added or decreased, that's what would be added there and so forth. So if you look at here on, for the fiscal year 2013, '14, we have one full-time position budgeted in elementary, and that's just to take care of some class size issues that we have in front of the grade levels. On the middle part of this page, you can see projected enrollments for each of the schools, how many full-time equivalencies certified by teacher positions that we have, the student to teacher ratio, in each one of those elementary schools, they pass five fiscal years. So it gives you kind of a snapshot of what's going on with class sizes, as well as non-certified student to teacher ratios. Now, this is only within the elementary program, so it doesn't include custodians and maintenance and those types of things. It's only the paraplows that are paid out of the elementary program. So mostly, it's mostly paraplows that are in the classroom itself, not special ed.
Catherine, you have a question?
Yeah, something that, that jumped out at me in the first table of the student, of the full-time FTEs for the elementary schools, was that Haley has about 150 additional kids than Hemingway, and we've got the same amount of FTEs, and I'm just wondering if that's something to look, you know, why, why that is, I guess, not...
Well, I mean, that's obvious if you look at that, because if you look at the student to teacher ratios over the past five years, they've been consistently lower than Hemingway than you have in any of the schools. So, I mean, it's not anything that's just happened, it's something that's, that's been going on for a long time.
Right. I wonder if there's any other, you know, possible reasons for that? I mean, because I look at Woodside, and I look at the non-certifieds, and there's more there, even with less students, and I think that's probably because of the ASD, you know, some of the special needs programs, and the ESL, so I can, I see that, and I do see the lower, the ratios up at Hemingway, but it seems like, you know, to have that many more certified, I mean, Woodside's got 367 kids, Hemingway, 360, that's a difference of nine kids, but they have a difference of five full-time teachers, so I'm just wondering what, if there's additional programs up there, or they need more reading specialists, or, it just might be, it's just something that kind of popped out at me, you know, looking at that. Maybe that could be looked into, or just no...
Yeah, I can send a breakdown of individual certified teachers that are paid at Haley versus what's paid at Hemingway, or all of the elementary schools in St. Louis. For example, we have, I know we have 16 classroom teachers at Hemingway, and 18 classroom teachers at Haley Elementary. 16 at Hemingway, 18 at Haley.
Right.
We have art teachers at both, ESL teachers at both, one. We have seven DI teachers at Hemingway, we have six DI teachers at Haley, music teachers, tech teachers, PE teachers, one in each building. We have two reading teachers at Hemingway and one at Haley.
So there's one extra, like, the extra reading teacher would be an extra one. When you said those, though, right, but are those, when you said the 16 and the 18, are those DI teachers included in that 16 and 18?
No. See, part of it's been, part of it has been a choice of where they've done it, so when he says there's one reading specialist at Haley and two at Hemingway, that's a little, that's a little deceptive, because the school made a choice to have a reading clinic, those are not, they're not, those teachers are not classified as reading specialists, because the reading specialists are pullout, and the clinic is self-contained, so there's, there are three teachers that are working separately from, the program is different. Now, the...
Right, see, that's what I'm...
... is gonna change, and if you look at it, it does change yearly, to some degree.
Yeah, I mean, I can look into it more, we don't need to take any more time of this, but I can talk to you about it more later, but, okay. I get that about the program. Thank you.
Okay, the bottom, the bottom part of this is just staffing for the elementary program, what's going on with staffing over the past five years, both certified and non-certified, as well as budgeted expenditures per child. Now, if you look on the bottom part of that, it's in fiscal year 2009, '10, '11, '12, and '10, '11, those are actual, actual numbers, actual money being spent for that program, but the other two are budgeted numbers. So that gives you an idea, you know, within the elementary program, what's happened with that, those expenditures per child over the past five years. Okay? And here's a breakdown of the elementary program on salaries for 2012, '13, and 2013, '14. The headings hung right up on here. So you can see in, in the elementary program, we had 10.23 million dollars budgeted for salaries last year, we have 10.157, 158 budgeted for next year. A large reason for that decrease is, is the effects of the retirement incentive program that we offered last year, as well as pay for performance money that was budgeted in those categories last year that's not this year, and the one-time, one-time 1 percent that we distributed out in December. So the effects of those, as we go through these, you're gonna see the effects of eliminating those, those salary numbers are pretty close to where they were prior year. You can see here that the benefits are increasing, because we had a 12 percent increase in health insurance, as well as an increase in the employees retirement system increases, so those are gonna be up in every one of the categories over the last year.
So which numbers which, Mike, because they both say 2012, '13?
2012, '13 is the first column, the second column is the next year.
Next year.
Next year. Okay, so here's the secondary program, same type of setup. We have, in this budget, we have one new foreign language teacher at the middle school. So we also have full-time equivalency, you can see for the last five years, the student to teacher ratio, full-time equivalency for each of the elementary and secondary schools. Also, it's a five-year comparison of the student to teacher ratio on non-certified staff, it'd be in the middle quarter of that, for each of the different schools. Misto?
The full-time... The full-time equivalency on that first column at the middle school, it looks like it jumps up to forty-six point five, is that supposed to be sixteen point five?
Well, that's the number of teachers, the number of ratio.
Oh, a number of teachers only, then, then, okay, then the ratios behind that. So the ratio would be fifteen point two.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, in the secondary program, towards the bottom of the page, I want to just point out to you that the fiscal year two thousand nine, ten, we had a hundred and thirteen full-time equivalent teachers, and right now, going with the one additional staff member, we're getting back to the one thirteen additional full-time equivalency secondary teachers. So over the course of the five years, we've reduced and brought back up. Yeah?
Just a clarification, when you're looking at full-time equivalency, is that equated, or is that figured, if every teacher was teaching every period of the day, all day, so that there were no preps figured into that?
No.
Okay.
Full-time positions.
Just full-time teachers compared to the number of students?
Full-time teachers.
Straight division?
But it does include all the social workers, anybody who's got a certification, right? Not in this. Not in this. Not in these numbers. How about reading specialists? No, not in these numbers. These are all classroom teachers. These are all classroom teachers. Classroom teachers paid out of the secondary education program, so it doesn't include any learning disabilities or any, like, special ed.
Catherine?
I guess this question is to John, well, John and Mike. Are we adding a science teacher to the high school?
Yes and no. We're adding a science position, but not an FTE. So Matt Wells is retiring, Pete has chosen not to replace that position, but to move it to science, because there's a new requirement from the State Department of two extra science credits now required, more on top of what was required before, so now there's six science requirements for graduation.
Right.
So he moved that position into science. So there's not a new position, they're just moving the resource.
Right, so we're creating an extra science position, but we're losing another position?
Right.
I get it.
So we've taken Matt Wells's position, a full-time position, and moved it to science where the demand is.
What was his position?
His demand was, or his position was ESL newcomers.
Uh-huh.
That program has shrunken, even though our ESL program is fairly large, but the newcomer program has diminished, so...
Great, thank you.
Okay, so you can see, like, in the salaries category here, we're actually showing a decrease in the budgeted amount of salaries by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A lot of that, probably half of that is gonna be from that early retirement incentive program that we offered last year. We had a lot of, most of the people that took advantage of it came out of the secondary program, and the people that were replaced, they were much less on the salaries, so it actually saved us quite a bit of money. But it's kind of inversely related to fringe benefits as well, because fringe benefits, which is a portion of that based on salaries, is also increasing because of the health insurance costs, the version insurance.
Do you have a figure for how much health insurance increased?
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent, thank you.
Okay, here's the alternative school program. One thing I want to point out, the alternative school program, we did hire a new science teacher, Silver Creek High School, so they went from three FTE to four. Same type of setup, you can see the last five years' history of what the student-to-teacher ratio is based on the budgets, as well as the non-certified, and then the staffing levels over the last five fiscal years, both certified and non-certified, and then the expenditures per child, as a portion of the general fund for the last five years as well. So you can see here salaries went up a little bit, by about fifty thousand dollars. When I budget for new positions into the district, I budget for what the average teacher makes in the district, and typically, we hire people that come in less than the average, so the budget numbers that are in the budget are gonna be a little bit high. 'Cause I think the number that I use for full-time position with benefits is about a hundred and seven thousand. Typically, when a staff member comes in, that's based on, I think it's based on a projected salary of about seventy. And typically, when you hire somebody, they're coming in at somewhere around fifty-two to fifty-one thousand, somewhere in there. Yes, John?
Does that do the fact that the majority of our teachers are eligible for retirement soon, so they're at the bottom end of the pay scale?
Yeah, that's what it is.
John?
Just to clarify, with the new salary scale and schedule that the Board of Negotiating Team negotiated last year with the union, the highest that a teacher can come in to the district right now is at sixty thousand. That's if you paid them a master's nine and gave them the full years, 'cause they put lines in as well, which means you can only bring so many years' experience. So the average, the average retirement this year, the average salary between the nine people that will leave the district this year that I have so far is sixty-six thousand. So if you hired people back at the very top of the pay scale, the most expensive teacher you could possibly hire, you would see a savings of fifty-four thousand, and if you hired them at the very bottom, you would see a savings of somewhere around three hundred thousand, two hundred seventy-nine. So there's quite a range in there.
Okay, this is the exceptional child program, so this is our special education program, learning disability-type students. This is also a program that has one additional FTE for next year, and the voices program in the program that was hired in April by the board, so you'll see slight increases in the salaries and benefits in here as well. So staffing level is going from twenty-three and a half last year to twenty-four and a half FTE. So the budgeted amount is gonna increase slightly towards that, you're gonna see that. Okay, here's the numbers on salaries, benefits, and purchase services. The reason the purchase services are increasing from three thousand and ninety-one hundred dollars is so we can get the wireless connection set up for the voice program, as part of that budget that was approved. And the reason for the supplies and materials for the increase there is as well as for the voices program, that was approved in that program on the initial salary basis. Okay, this is the exceptional child preschool program, so this is the handicap special education program for three- and five-year-olds within the general fund. There's also another fund for federal money, but this is within the general fund. There's no new positions that we've budgeted in here, everything's pretty constant for the last five years in this program as well.
Mike, I know with our regular preschool program, we're not given any funds for that. Do we get any funds for this program, as in fed funds?
We get a small amount of federal money that we'll get into a little bit later, but it's only maybe thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, you can see salaries have decreased in this, we did have a retirement last year. In this program, we hired at a much reduced rate, so that's the reason for the decrease in salaries here. Typically, when we hire staff, it's not, we definitely don't go out and hire new staff members based on whether they're gonna come in on the salary schedule, we always hire the most qualified people, it just typically works out that way when it comes in. A lot of it is because of the ceiling we put on, on how much people can bring in, how many years of experience that they can come into on the salary schedule, so that's kind of the artificial ceiling that we put in as well. Now, it's not really artificial, it is real. Okay, the next program is the gifted and talented program. One of the things I wanted to put in here is we did budget five thousand dollars, not in this program, but within the instructional improvement program, to have an outside consultant come in and take a look at the gifted and talented program, to try to make any kind of recommendations on how to improve that program, or what we should be doing to make changes to that program. But what I wanted to do is bring it, because it does affect this program, and it will affect this program in the future, I just wanted to address it here, as well as the other program where that expenditure's coming out.
Unrelated, but when do you expect that report, or what's the timeline?
We haven't even hired the consultants to come in to do it, it will happen sometime in the next, over the next year.
Okay.
So what line item is that budgeted in, in the fund description?
It's not in...
Oh, it's not in there?
It's not in this one.
I'm sorry.
We'll get into the instructional improvement, I'll show you where it's at.
Okay.
Okay, so salaries have actually decreased a little bit, fringe benefits increased a little bit overall, it's a slight decrease in gifted and talented program. Okay, the interscholastic program, this is our activities program, athletics, speech, debate, those types of things. We also approved the salary schedule index for the next coming year, had it approved through the negotiation process as well. That's based on criteria, a weighted percentage of that, how many students participate in the program, how many coaches that they have to oversee, the length of the schedule, and a lot of different factors. So it's not gonna affect the budget at all, but it's gonna, it's gonna be able to give a lot more transparency on why coaching positions are placed on the salary schedule that they're at. Okay, you can see here, you know, we're not increasing much as far as salaries are concerned. There is an increase in fringe benefits because of the public employees retirement system, as well as the health insurance. Summer school, we don't have any staff members that are paid out of summer school as a full-time equivalency basis. We do have a lot of, several, quite a few staff members that are on a stipend basis that work in summer time, but since they're not full-time equivalency, that's why the zeros are up there. Salaries and fringe benefits, everything's pretty consistent with what it's been over the last year as well. So the instructional portion of the budget, the general fund budget, is actually increasing from thirty-three point three million dollars to thirty-three point five million, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase from last fiscal year.
Steve? And so that would be, we're getting a new position at Hemingway, was it two at the middle school? One at the middle school, voices program, really those three?
The alternative.
Alternative science.
Four.
Oh, and one science, right, so four new positions. That's pretty much why that increased?
Right, well, that is...
Yeah, that is the increase.
Because if you look, the way I budget for those salaries at a hundred and seven thousand dollars a position, I mean, that's almost four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in new money.
Right, but it's really only an increase of two hundred and thirty, or something like that, total, to the budget, because of the other savings. Okay?
Okay, here's our attendance guidance and health programs, these are all of our counselors at each of the different schools, secondary schools. We haven't had any new positions, we haven't had any new positions in this for the last five years. Okay, here's another example of salaries decreasing over the last fiscal year, due to the fact that we have retirements on an early retirement incentive basis, and hired for less, as well as the paid performance money going away. Special services program, this would be all of our social workers, our speech therapists, language specialists, occupational therapists, psychologists. There's not any new positions in this category as well. You can look back in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, you see we have ten FTE, and now we're down to nine, so we have had a reduction in that program over the past five years. So you can see for the last five years, what we've tried to do is shift positions around within the general fund, to hold the general fund as steady as we can, between, you know, for example, this program and maybe a learning disability or into the secondary programs and elementarys. Supplies, the supplies budget, budgets in these categories, in this category is also, I think I mentioned this last year, we made a change to where we used to allocate supplies budgets to these staff members, the majority of these staff members based on just a thousand dollars a year. Now, we're putting the responsibility on the individual principals to budget these dollar amounts, so the principals are budgeting for some of these people, not all of them, but for some. The rest of them, like the people that are district-related people, like the psychologists, we do allocate based on a thousand dollars per staff member there.
Where does the psychologist show up? Is he in that number, Mike?
He's in this number. Okay, here's the instructional improvement program, this would be like where the curriculum director is paid on. We don't have any new positions budgeted in the instructional improvement program, and what I'm trying to do here is show you an emphasis on where professional development money is being spent over the past several years. So you have like a three-year history here of different programs that we're focused on, like curriculum adoption, materials, things like that. So this is the category, the five thousand dollars would be set aside for the gifted and talented program, and you can see that under the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, there's a game program review of five thousand dollars. IP training, we have twenty-eight thousand dollars budgeted for next year, science adoption, twenty-one thousand dollars, staff trainings is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's a category that's got several different items involved in that.
Can you explain the jump in staff training money from two thousand eleven, twelve, it was thirty-seven, eight, now it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand? What is included in that?
A lot of it is textbook adoption training, to send staff members out to investigate textbook adoption materials.
And that's only been initiated in the past two years? I'm just looking at that huge change in that's numbers. What accounts for that?
I just told you what that is.
No, I mean, so you're saying that it goes from thirty-seven thousand eight hundred to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, because you're, now you're training people in textbook adoption?
Textbook adoption and investigation. Before that, we didn't really send a lot of staff members out like we have in the past several years.
So by staff members, that means who, teachers or administrators?
Teachers. Teachers are the ones that make the adoption, it's with the guidance of the curriculum director, but the teachers are the ones that are making the recommendations.
So you're sending teachers where, to learn about textbooks? So, you're sending teachers where to learn about textbooks?
I would say there's a lot of things coming at us. You can see a slight increase in the IB, but there's also Common Core state standards coming at us with the new S-Back tests that are also coming at us, the state assessments. There's a lot of training on that going on, our Common Core boot camps, things like that that have to take place, the things that the state are bringing down the road at us as well as the programming that we do have. We're looking at an investigation into PYP, which is Primary Years Program, and the diploma program. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on. There's new trainings coming into the elementarys regarding the leader B program. There's a lot of programming that requires staff development or professional development monies.
So, you're sending teachers out of the area to study these things or you're bringing people in?
Both.
Okay. And is that all teachers or just some?
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to get in this level of detail, we're going to be here all day.
Well, I've heard a lot of discussion actually about that huge jump and it would be nice to have an explanation.
Well, if I could, I would go, professional development has to lead us forward because professional development, as the Common Core comes, the math has changed, we have a different level of support that we need to give our teachers in the development, in the professional development. I think that's happening everywhere. There's also a portion of this budget is to help identify the things that we know that's coming in the dual inversion program with the school, with the magnet school. So, a portion of this budget, $50,000 is set aside to do the investigations that we feel is necessary to implement that program as well.
Mike, what's the advanced placement? We've got $25,000 and in the past, we haven't had it. Is it, has it got transferred a different way or what's that one for? Is that training for advanced placement or?
It's training for advanced placement, teachers, to send them out to get certified to teach those advanced placement classes at high school.
John?
The state used to fund us partially for that through the gate program. They don't do that anymore. So, for example, at high school, I think about $7,000 a year to send students just into high school out to get AP training. Of course, our program is much smaller than that. That money's gone completely.
Got it.
So, we're not getting any reimbursements back from the state.
Got it.
And it follows the board rules?
Yeah. No, I was just asking, I know we've been doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you really look at it, a lot of this increased money that's budgeted for professional development is based on the board rules, the strategic plan and the board rules.
Liz?
I'm just curious, what is the percentage of what we spend on teachers' salaries and benefits compared to the whole M&amp;O in all kinds of different categories?
I don't have that.
So, what is the total general fund expectation this year? Can you just?
Salaries and benefits?
No, the whole thing, the whole general fund.
The whole general fund budget?
Yeah.
It's $55 million?
Okay. Because I just counted out, there's, it looks like there's 32.5, 34.6 in salaries. So, I'm looking at that and wondering, that looks like it's about a 60 to 65 percent. Is that right? It seems low.
General fund salaries, all general fund salaries and benefits is about 84 percent of our general fund budget.
Okay. So, I just added up all these numbers, I got 34.6.
You haven't seen it low. You've looked at the instructional portion of the general fund.
Exactly, for teachers, right, exactly. Right. But in 34.6, you've got 34.6 for teachers, and the whole general fund is 85, whatever. That seems like it's teacher salaries and benefits are 60 percent, 60 dollars, something like that, is that right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I haven't done that.
Okay, that seems like a very important number, you know, in terms of what is our , the teachers in terms of the whole general fund.
I don't think it's any different than any other typical school district in Idaho. I think it's pretty constant. I mean, if you look at how much we're, how many more staff members we have versus every other school district in the state of Idaho, I think that relationship is even forceful. I bet we have more certified teachers on staff as a ratio of non-certified as well as non-instructural type positions. I bet by far, the instructional side is a lot higher than it is on the non-instruction.
Teachers are under the impression that they're 85 percent of the budget.
John, maybe John has some clarification.
Basically, what Mike's saying is that 85 percent generally of an M&amp;O or maintenance operations budget is in salaries and employees. And what we're leaving out here is all the classifieds, all the parapros, all the janitors, all the cooks, all the admin assistants, all our bus drivers, all of our staff. So, if you look at all the staffing employment-wise, you know, typically 85 percent of your M&amp;Os in staffing.
Okay, yeah. I think that the teachers are under the impression that they're 85 percent of the budget.
Let's move on, Mike.
Okay, instructional improvement. You know, here's the categories last year versus this year. Purchase services are, most of that is all professional development. Here's our educational media program. These are librarians and librarian parapros. No new positions in this budget. It's been pretty constant over the last five years. Salaries have actually decreased in this category and that as well. The staff was hired less money than what was budgeted because of the retirement. Board of Education budget. If you look at here, there's no positions in that budget at all. This budget is also that increase in over the last year. District administration. There's also no positions budgeted in this year's. You can see over the past five years on the certified, we haven't had any increases. Last five years on non-certified, we did have to change from instructional improvement into the district administrative category. And one of those positions was Lolly's, that was painted under instructional improvement and we moved here, that we talked about three years ago, as well as the communications This budget also is not increasing very much next year versus this year. Salaries are up slightly. Benefits are constant.
Excuse me? I read at the top of the previous page, it says that this category includes district legal fees. Where are those?
It's under the purchase services category.
Which is the next page?
It's included at $193,000.
Okay, so that's what's budgeted for the entire year for next year is $193,000?
For purchase services, which is a lot of different categories. It's not only...
Which includes the legal fees?
Yes.
And what have legal fees been this year?
Not in the general fund. I can't tell you what we've paid in the general fund. Like, I guess, I can tell you what we have budgeted for legal fees in the general fund.
Where else do legal fees get paid from besides the general fund?
McKinsey Laws, it gets paid out of the school facilities as well.
And anything else? Any, I mean, is there any other place that legal fees come from?
No.
Okay, so the general fund and the school facilities, the letting then?
Yes.
And so, this budget is for $193,300 and then will it be, you will be showing the rest of the legal fees elsewhere?
Yes.
Basically, these legal fees are just the ones that we pay for our district attorney to represent us for local issues and things like that. The planning facilities, McKinsey Laws is a different entity entirely.
Yes.
Mike, what page are we on?
We are on page 37.
And the total number of pages?
125.
Okay, so, I'm going to leave questions open to the board and we've got to get through this. So, I would ask the public to, if you have questions, please note them and Mike will, you can call Mike or Mike will address those at that time.
Excuse me? A comment please to the entire board?
This is not an opportunity for comment. You can ask a question.
All right, a suggestion.
A question.
And other entities...
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order.
Steve?
I told you.
Just listen to me just for a second. Other places they schedule multiple public meetings for...
No, you said you're out of order. He's the chairman of the board and if you want to stay, you're going to have to be in order.
Sir, I'm just suggesting to the other board members that you schedule more public meetings to allow more public input.
This isn't the time to do it and he said that he is not the time to do it. So, you're out of order and you're going to have to leave or you can stay as the chairman asked you and not comment.
Dr. Parker, you need to learn.
Okay, everyone quiet, please. Mike, continue.
Okay, school administration program. These are all the principals and principal secretary positions in the schools itself. These positions have stayed constant over the past five years as well. Salaries and benefits for this category as well as purchase services. That's pretty constant over the last year as well. Business operations program, that would include all of the human resources department other than Mr. Blackman's salary. That would include all of the payroll department, the finance department, and all of the associated administrative assistants. This program as well, you can see over the past five years on the non-certified aspect of it, we've actually decreased in staff from nine and a half full-time equivalency in 2019 to eight now. Salaries have also decreased in this category. We also had a retirement here with Patty Rice leaving. Central services program, this is our technology department. You know, here's another program that we had, we had one increase last year. What we talked about was approved, was approved in last year's budget. Other than that, not much has changed in this program either over the last five years. You can see on this one, here's the aspects of it. We've got $33,000 budgeted this year versus $13,000 last year under supplies and materials. That's for our, to update the REED 180 program. That's a reading program for the elementary schools that are using. You can also see that the purchase services category is increasing from $681,000 to $681. That's to include all of the network wiring improvements that we need to do at Bellwood Carey, Haley, Hemingway, and the middle school. A large portion of that is going to go to Hemingway for all the wireless connections up there while buildings are open. I think that budget alone is $120,000 for Hemingway. This is the building's custodial program. We haven't had very many changes in the custodial program over the past five years, but it looks like we've increased a half of it, half of one position from five years ago. So, this has been pretty constant over the last five years as well. Salaries have been pretty constant over the last five years. There's not much change this year versus last year in any of this program as well. Insurance is going to go up slightly. Okay, here's our building maintenance program. Now, these are all of our maintenance, traveling people around throughout the district, not the individual building custodial. This program as well has increased very much in the last five years. I mean, this is a non-student building, so there's no staff members involved in this program at all. On the next page, the $85,000 of budget for capital objects, that's to resurface the tennis courts at the middle school as well as to make some sidewalk repairs and things throughout the district. Okay, this is the maintenance student occupied buildings. There hasn't been much of an increase in this category, in this program either over the last five years. There's not any new positions that were increasing them all this year. The next page, I'll just bring your attention to the capital objects on the bottom, a couple of the things that we're going to, that we have in this budget. We want to refinish the community campus gymnasium floor. We've got roof problems that we're going to deal with at Carey as well as the community campus. And we'll come out of this, we have fire sprinkler repairs that we want to do at Hemingway while the building's open. We want to replace the Haley elementary cafeteria floor, it's in this budget. We have some bathroom repairs that we need to take care of at the middle school and an air curtain in the technology building to keep all of our network servers cool. Yeah, Kathy?
You mentioned resurfacing the community campus gym floor. Does anybody else contribute to that, I mean, rec district?
Everybody does. Everybody does. All of the occupants of the community campus participated in.
Is it split equally or how does it, what's the percentage?
It's based on a percentage of overall use of the community campus based on square footage costs.
Does it come out of the rent or is it?
Yeah, it's a shared cost arrangement with all of the occupants. So, based on a percentage of the total square footage that they occupy is the amount of money that they would contribute towards those repairs. That's like all of the repairs of the community campus is a shared cost arrangement.
Is that something that you figure out and you bill them or how does that?
We bill them every three months, yes. Okay, here's our grounds department. We don't have any staff members in the grounds department. This paid for all of our landscaping contracts and snow removal contracts and things like In the capital optics program here, we do have a new budget, a new snow blower, tool cat snow blower, budgeted in this as well as a small forklift for the maintenance building. The tool cat, the snow blower is going to replace the snow blower tool cat that was purchased in 2006. Security program. We don't have any new positions in the security program this year. The budget's been pretty constant over the last several years as well, very small increase.
Mike, remind me, we got one from the county and one from Haley that suffered from this?
No. Uh, yes. Kind of. We do have, we do have one from the county that's not budgeted anywhere within the budget because they pay the salary itself. We do have the one position from Haley that we pay for that's within that purchase service amount.
Okay.
And Scott May.
Okay.
Okay, this is the transportation program. Now, this would be for all of the buses to transport kids to and from school. So the positions here, I mean, if you look out through the course of the last five years, it steadily declined. And that's just because we've been more efficient in the routes than we have. Salaries and benefits are gonna be pretty constant with whatever else is going on within the general fund. We are, uh, we do have a small increase in the supplies and materials category. That would be for fuel increases. This is our activity transportation program. Now, this would be for program for like field trips and activities type of transportation. So we do have one driver in this program that just does activity trips.
Is this including sports or just activities?
It does include sports. No, it does not. This is only field trips. The next one includes all of that type of stuff. Okay? General transportation, now this is, the general transportation is the program... No, that's not right either. On the last one, the activity transportation is what covers all of the field trips as well as athletics. Now, some of the activity field trips that we do are reimbursable, so they would belong in the six-eighty-one category. So these are the non-reimbursable field trips. So the general transportation program would be for all maintenance-type vehicles that we have in the district. There's no positions in that budget as well. We do have, uh, there's a budget in here of thirty thousand eight hundred under the purchase services. That we have some upgrades to a bus routing software of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. And I'm not sure if we're gonna actually do or not. So if we don't do that, those upgrades, then that would be just money that's not being spent anywhere. We also have a small increase in the fuel costs as well in this category. Community services program. Now, this is, this is the program that we use to, any of the, like, shared cost arrangements that we have through, like, the YMCA, South Central District Health, the nursing contract. Our contract with the state regarding legislative services would be for safe schools training, IDLA, Horace Foundation, those types of things. And we have partnerships with other agencies throughout the school district is where this comes from. There's not any positions that get paid out of this thing. We are anticipating some additional days in the nursing contract with South Central District Health. That would be the reason for the increase in this category here. They're just gonna provide additional days to the school district.
I'm just curious, what, what is the school nurse, what do they do? I mean, it's just like, I'm just not knowing.
Everything from checking kids for head lice to diseases to...
It's funny.
One of their main things that they do is they are responsible for making sure all students' immunization records are up to date. It's their responsibility to do that, so that's a big part of what they do.
Okay, so when, like, kids are in any school, they're reviewing them?
Right, every year, every one of them.
Okay, so they're contracted out to come in for X amount of hours to...
It's actually cheaper for us to contract out with South Central District Health instead of having to hire, you know, two nurses for the district to provide those same services.
Right, right, well, that totally makes sense.
And then the strategic, Mike does say, when we developed it, that we would increase the presence of nurses in the schools, particularly the elementary schools. So if you go in here, you'll see that there. So over the last couple of years, we've added an allocation of that service. Okay, now we're getting into the capital asset program within the general fund. Next page. I'll just bring your attention to here, who are the capital objects, that's seventy thousand dollars. That's to replace Bellevue and Haley playground equipment. And what we did with the agreement that we have with the PTOs is if they raise a portion of those funds, the district will also contribute money to help do that same type of thing we did with Cary several years ago. And both Haley and Bellevue are gonna participate in that. So from what they have told me, they've already raised, both of those schools have already raised their portion of the contribution to these things, so the district will come in and replace those playground equipment. We're actually doing all of the labor ourselves, to which we're gonna save quite a bit of money on that. Lester's a certified playground installer, and so he'll be able to do one of them, and then we'll get volunteers to do the other. Okay, here's our fund transfers category. So this is money going out of the general fund and into other funds. So here's a four-year history of each one of those transfers and what they're for. For example, like, environmental education fund, there's a transfer set up for two-hundred, twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars next year. Academies program is almost a hundred thousand, the preschool fund, which is to take care of those kids in the preschool program. Not handicapped kids, but the regular preschool. Three-hundred-and-forty thousand, community campus fund. Two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, all the way down to school plant buses fund of two-hundred thousand dollars. So the state mandates that the depreciation that they reimburse us back gets coded into the general fund. All of the buses has to be purchased under the bus purchase fund. And there has to be a transfer set up between the general fund and the school plant fund to pay for the depreciation. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what state statute says.
So this is the other funds category that I was asking about in the beginning?
Yes, yeah. So as we go through the rest of these funds, you'll see transfers coming into these funds in the same amount as these amounts to offset those costs. Okay?
Mike?
Yes.
Steve? So this, the, I get a lot of these, the parent liaison fund?
That's Kelly Jones's position.
Right, so what's, so there was no money in it for two thousand ten through last year, but now there is ninety-three thousand dollars in that?
Yes.
So can you explain that, I guess?
The general fund that was contributing the money for the program is not contributing any longer.
Okay.
So to sustain that program and that position, it's coming from the general fund.
And that includes salaries and benefits, huh?
That, yeah. As we get into that fund, you'll see that it is all salaries and benefits, and I think there's a two-thousand dollar supply budget. Okay, now we're getting to all of the other funds that you were asking about earlier. This is the federal forest fund. This is money that comes from the federal government to the state, distributed out to the entities for timber sales. And what we've done with this money is transfer from the federal forest program into the bus purchase fund to buy buses. So you'll see here that there's projected thirty-five thousand dollars to come in next year for the cement timber. And on the next page, it'll show up going out of this fund to transfer into the bus purchase fund to offset the cost of the new buses. That's the only purpose of this fund. It has two transactions, money coming in and transfer out. Environmental education fund, this is for the sixth grade program, cafeteria pints. Twenty-five dollars a student for the camp rental, fifty-five hundred dollars for projected tuition. The rest of the money is coming from the general fund, it's a transfer. Okay, elementary program, salaries, benefits. Camp rental fee is fifteen thousand for the purchase services and some supplies for that program. That, that money's been pretty constant, and that cost of the programs have been very constant over the last, oh, I don't know, ten years. The academies fund, now this is for the performing arts academy, the construction academies, teaching academies, culinary arts, drafting residential construction with medical technology and high schools. We haven't had any new positions in this program over the past five years. We do receive twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from CSI to help offset the cost of that teaching academy instructor. And the rest of the money that's coming in is a transfer from the general fund. Here's the projected salaries and benefits for that program. The only thing that's changed here is we used to have a hundred thousand dollars set aside, fifty thousand for Cary and fifty thousand for the high school to build those construction academy houses, and that's going away. So that program is, the program will exist, but the building of the houses will exist. Okay, here's the preschool program, not special education preschool, just regular preschool. Now, the reason that this is put to sell in its own fund instead of the general fund is the state was concerned that there was a mandate on state statutes that did not allow school districts to have preschool programs. So in order, in order to protect the general fund, they recommended setting up a special fund, preschool fund, and then transfer the money from the general fund to the preschool to offset the costs. So we do have the salary schedule of the sliding scale for parents that have their kids participate in this. So basically, you know, a family of, of six that makes under thirty thousand dollars a year of their tuition, they get big tuition. The purpose of this preschool fund was initially set up was to get those Hispanic kids that are new to the country, that don't know any of the language, into the school system sooner to be able to teach them a little bit of English before they get into the kindergarten program. And if you look at the population, up till last fiscal year, that's really the target that we were hitting. But this year, it changed a little bit to where we're getting more Anglo kids into the program that are actually paying tuition to this program. So if you look at over the last several years, you'll see a steady increase in the amount of money that we're collecting on tuition payments for the program.
So is it a, to get into the school, is it like a lottery? Or, you know, you wonder, to get in, if you've got, you know, fifty kids, and you've got, you know, X amount of low-income kids, X amount of ESL kids, X amount of Anglo kids, like, how do they choose that? I'm just curious.
It's set up on a first come, first served basis. Once we hit the maximum number of kids that we'll allow to the preschool, then that's it. But we do, we still get a high portion of that. I would say probably ninety percent of those kids that are in that program are those Hispanic kids that, that don't know the language or have, that are distraught. That's really the goal of the program, and it will continue to be the goal of the program. Okay, so the majority of the money coming here is a transfer from the general fund. The only thing we have set up here are salaries and benefits in the preschool. If the preschools need any kind of supply money or allocation, it's all budgeted by the individual schools themselves through their allocations. Community campus fund, now this is the shared, shared cost arrangements we have with the rec district CSI and the drug coalition. So you can see under the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, those are the anticipated expenditures for each one of those entities that they're gonna have to pay for that cost shared arrangement. Okay, right now, they are talking about trying to hire a half-time position to oversee the building on evenings and weekends. With the agreement that they know that they're gonna have to pay, you know, their percentage, portion of that salary. Right now, it's a half-time without any benefits. So the portion that we would be paying as a school district is only about maybe nine thousand dollars a year. And the rest of it would be picked up by the other occupants. Okay, so here are the transfers coming in from the general fund, it's two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. We do have an arrangement that we're gonna start, the money collected from the sale of lunches through the campus cafe has always gone through the food service program, but we're bringing it back into the campus cafe so we can identify whether that cafe is making money, breaking even, costing us money. So you'll see a revenue category coming in for this for fifty thousand dollars. And on the next page, you'll also see a fifty thousand dollar expenditure of money going out to pay for the program. But we do monitor that program every month, and over the course of the last ten months, twelve months, it's been pretty stable and breaking even. And prior to that, it was, prior to the remodel of the building, it was actually costing us, the occupants, about, oh, three to four hundred dollars a month. Okay, on the expenditure side, you'll see salaries are increasing slightly. You'll also see the custodial on the buildings program, the third of the way down. Maintenance part of it, on the lower portion of that. That would be to cover the cost of maintenance supplies, custodial supplies, supplies, material, any type of equipment. All of this money is on a cost share arrangement based on the square footage. Under the purchase services here, on the food service program, you'll see the fifty thousand dollars offset for that campus cafe. Okay, here's the parent liaison program. This is Kelly Jones's position. So you see, last year, we had budgeted in there seventy-five thousand dollars for the carryover, twenty-five thousand for the donation. And now it's gonna be all offset at the general fund, the ninety-three thousand coming in for the general fund. The next line, on the next page, it's all budgeted, two thousand for supplies, and the rest of it is all salary and benefits. Yes, Kathy?
So I guess when this program came about two years ago, it was because of this private donor that wanted to see it happen? It wasn't something that, is it something that the district had talked about in putting in this program?
No, it wasn't. It was two, it was a philanthropic family that are wealthy. They had their children in the community school, they were not having success there. Took them out of the community school, put them in Hemingway, had some great success in the special ed program. Came to Jim Lewis at the time, and I was up here at the time, Jim was superintendent, and said, "We would love to create, help create an ASL position for special ed parents because there's not very good information out there guiding." And they said, "We'll pay for the whole thing for three years." I think we actually got them to pay for it for four years. The problem with those positions is it's kinda like soft money. Eventually, if they quit funding it, you have a liability.
Right, so this would be a new position? Right, so this would be a new position as well?
It's not a new position, it's a new funding, it's a new funding source.
It's a new funding position, funded position for us, just like we're bringing on a new middle school teacher, a new, but it's also kind of a new, I mean, it's not a new program.
It's not.
I understand that, but it's not, it is a new program.
At some point, it's a new, it's a new position. Have we evaluated how that program does, has worked?
You know, we've had very positive feedback from the, from the community, a lot of the special ed parents, and now she's teaching classes, you know, I think you know that at night, parenting classes, they're full, and have a waiting list.
John?
As you say, I've been to a lot of those classes, and they're, they are pretty full. Yeah, I showed up just to see what the response was by our special ed parents, and they were very full, and we've had people in from the state to educate them on what resources are out there for them and so forth. And the person in that position coordinates all that.
Great, dear, thanks.
Thank you.
Technology Education Fund is going away, so that page will be deleted. Driver's Education Fund, I'm going to start going a little quicker through here.
I'm just going to pause for one second. I just want to ask, I want to know from the board, and Mike, your schedule, line everyone, do we want to continue on?
Where are you?
It's one thirty.
I can be done in ten minutes.
Oh yeah, I'm good.
Are we all good with that on the board? Okay, Mike?
Okay, Driver's Education Fund, this is a state program where we get tuition from the state as well as the rest of the money coming from, that doesn't make up for the tuition, it's coming through a general fund transfer. The State Professional Technical Education, this is all vocational type of programs. That's a list of the programs themselves. The next just page is the revenues, this is all self-supported fund, there's no money that comes in from the general fund. The next page is the expenditures, it's pretty constant of what it's been for the last several years. These are all budgets that are set by the individual teachers. Title One Fund is a low-income disadvantaged program funded by the state through the federal government. This fund is actually decreasing next year because of the sequestration from the federal government, so we're looking at about an eight percent decrease in funding in all of the federal funds that we're going to receive next year. So all of these title programs, you see, there's a decrease of about eight percent.
What does that equal, like, you had all the programs up dollar-wise, you guess?
I think it's probably forty thousand, maybe, total. Okay, Title Six P Preschool, this is a, this is a special education program through the federal government. This is also looking at on the revenue side, if you look at this, it's also showing about an eight percent decrease. Okay, expenditure side, there's not much change in that. Most of these federal programs right now are just, are just covering salaries and benefits. So there's not much money, if all, if at all, budgeted for supplies or professional development or anything. Title Six Preschool, this is for the three and five-year-old kids that are handicapped, coming from the federal government. This is also looking at a decrease in funding of about eight percent. And it also just pays for half of the position. Perkins Fund is a title, it's a vocational program coming from the federal government. Typically, we use this money to update labs and things at high school for those programs, at both high schools, Cary and New High School. Title Three is a limited English proficiency fund, it's funded through the federal government. Most of this fund is covering the cost of two paraposts that we have.
My book page, anyone?
I'm on page one oh eight now.
Moving fast.
I'm moving fast. I'm on the Improving Teacher Quality level. Now, this is the fund that we have set aside for the rent subsidy program that is getting phased out during the last year of it now, as well as the Grow Your Own program that's still in effect, and then the rest of the money will be used for professional development.
So is the Grow Your Own getting phased out as well?
No, it's not. The Grow Your Own's program is still going on, and I think we probably have between fifteen and eighteen people involved in that. We've hired, I think, three or four over the last couple of years.
We've got three more coming up right now that are kind of on the tail end of their program.
They've been great because they've already been in our schools, you know, and the teachers, interestingly enough, the principals hire them, they were parapros, and hire them back in their own schools after they went through the program, really, very cool.
Right.
And the most effective aspect of that is, is most of these are bilingual teachers, so they move right into the dual immersion program where we have a hard time finding those people.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Food Service Program, this is the program that we're also looking at a ten cent increase in school lunch prices next year, and that's based on federal government mandates. You know, we talked about this the last couple of years, where we had ten cent increases based on the free amount versus what you're charging. It can't be less for the paying kids it is for what the federal government subsidizes. So we're asking for a ten cent increase in both the lunch program and the breakfast Some of this money, some of this fund also is a transfer from the general fund for next year, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand is what we're projecting. To give you an idea of what it would cost for this fund to self-support itself, a ten cent increase in the price of school lunch and breakfast equates to about a nine thousand dollar increase. So you'd have to increase like over two dollars per meal to break even on this thing. So your lunches would be four twenty-five, four thirty-five. So it's really, there's no way. And we've been self-funding, we've been self-funding this program, the food service program for the last twenty-five years. Okay, this is a land lottery fund. This is a fund that's set aside to purchase land in the future. So if we needed to find an elementary site to purchase, this is the fund that would cover that. The money's just been accumulating in that fund for the last twenty-two years. We haven't spent any money on this thing, just give you this. School Plant Facility Fund, yeah.
Just real quick, so that money that went into the, I'm starting to get the transfers, the land lottery fund was just money that we just moved over from the general fund into this fund?
To the land lottery?
Uh-huh.
No.
Oh.
No, the land lottery fund is just a fund that just carries over from...
Right, so where did the money come from now?
Sale of land from the land lottery funds. So the state owns, the state owns a lot of land that is in public trust, and part of that public trust is this, is this forest, and so when the state leases out forests to be logged and different, and there's a revenue stream, it has to be dedicated, that land, to education, so that's where that money comes in.
Oh, so it comes from the state and it goes in our, so each school district has their land lottery fund? Like they just said, hey, you get this much, you get this much, so every year we get like a little more?
It's decreasing.
But we do, okay, I get it, thank you.
Okay, School Plant Facilities Fund. These are the, these are the programs, is what has been completed and when they've Revenue sources from this, you'll see the fund balance, nine million dollars is what we're projecting the fund balance to be in this plant facilities fund. That's the money that's all invested in that investment account that we have through C N I Northwest Securities. We have almost six million dollars in tax levy that we, that we collect every year. We still have about two point five million dollars to collect on those certificates of participations that we sold, that will be collected over the course of this summer as we finish Hemleyway up. Okay, here's the expenditure side, the one million dollars from the central services for technology purchases, Capital Objects Fund, that's to pay for the projects that we have ongoing right now with Hemleyway and middle school and Haley. And then the unappropriated balance at the bottom is just funds that are left over that we don't anticipate spending. Here, the thirteen point one there. State statute says for all of the funds, your revenue side has to balance with your expenditure side, and the only way you can make that balance is to have an unappropriated funds balance. So it's just money in the, in the fund that you don't anticipate spending, that we carry over for the year. Okay, the Bus Purchase Fund is just the fund set aside for state statutes to buy buses. The money has to be transferred from the general fund into this fund, and we have one invoice a year that's paid out, and just to buy two buses. And I think I sent this, this sheet to you, this is the sheet that will be posted, published in the newspaper for the next two weeks. It's a summary sheet showing budget amounts for all funds, and just, the next two pages
Okay, thank you, Mike.
More questions? You always know how to get a moment.
You'll be contacted, I'm sure. Thank you. Getting more questions before we adjourn, the board? I'll ask your motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make that motion.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.